Welcome, friends. My name is Nicole Laszlo and I am president of Brea PTA Council. Brea PTA Council is made up of Brea Mid Park High School PTSA, Brea Mid Park Middle School PTA, Baker PTA, Brook Park Elementary PTSA, Grandstone PTA, and Tite Curly Childhood PTA. We work within our communities to achieve the PTA mission. And what is the PTA mission, you may ask? Well, the PTA's mission is to make every child a potential reality by engaging and empowering families and communities to advocate for all children. We invite you to join any or all of our PTAs and to help us lead mission-focused and create a relevant resource for our areas of school to serve families. We welcome you tonight to this forum hosted by Brea PTA Council and co-sponsored by the League of Women Voters for Brea Placelet. Voting is the foundation and assignment of strong communities. Voting correlates with citizenship, education, income, and other kinds of civic health. It takes an active and engaged public like everyone here tonight in attendance to ensure broad representation and public positions that are responsive to community concerns. Brea PTA Council would like to thank all of you for coming out tonight and helping us to grow a full, strong community. We want to throw some extra special things out tonight to our faithful friends, our guys. We have our, thank you for those spirit fingers. We have some friends from the speech in the main club here tonight as well as our parents and pride execs helping us to welcome you all to their schools. Thank you guys so much for being here tonight and for taking some of the light off of us. We are excited to present to you the seven candidates running for school board. All seven candidates will be answering the same questions tonight that were created through submissions from Brea's and the school district students. We started asking for submissions in late August and we were able to compile them and then from once that made the vote gives the broadest answers to help you all with informing your decisions. The candidates will be hearing your questions tonight for the first time. This helps with integrity and the equity of this forum. There will not be questions from the audience that we can come up and say tonight, but afterward if you have an opportunity to talk with the candidates, please be people of kindness tonight as they are answering your questions. This is a nonpartisan event and we ask the audience to respectfully referee for excessive exuberance and pro举起或 against any particular candidate. The broad definition of a school board's role is that it acts as the governance case of the school district. It is important that a board serves as a positive and responsible liaison between the school district and the community. School board members need to be strong district ambassadors to the community and work hard to build public support and understanding of public education. Our moderator tonight is the wonderful Hannah Jeffrey. From the League of Women Voters, she will refer to form most of us. Thank you so much for being here tonight and for hosting that openly because I'm nervous of not staying up here for these three minutes. And our friends are here tonight and I'm going to be up here a lot longer. So good luck to all of you. Thank you all for coming tonight and we appreciate your support for the PTA.
Thank you, Nicole. I believe the rules are very difficult. The candidates will each get a three-minute opening speech time. And then, we're going to go in alphabetical order, so this chap will be first and this thirty will be last. But when it comes at the end, they have a minute at the end to sum up. So we'll start at the beginning and we'll work this way. And I will try to mix up who answers the question first, so it's not always the same person. They have the three minutes for their opening statement. They have two minutes apiece to answer questions and then a hold a minute at the end. And as Nicole said, you can talk to them afterwards if you have your own questions that did come up today. These questions were submitted by, as she said, by students. But we're not going to give them two questions yet. I will say that these questions will be timed and the introduction will be timed. The timers will alert the candidates when they have thirty seconds left and when it's time to stop. And the candidates can finish a sentence but not start a new paragraph. Alright, so I'll start with Ms. Jeff with the opening speech.
Good evening. Thank you to the PTA Council and the League of Women Voters for presenting this forum this evening. My parents came to this country in 1965 because they wanted better life for their children away from the tyranny of a communist regime. They wanted their children to be free thinkers, to get a good education, to have more than they did. Isn't that what we all want? It's what my husband and I wanted for our children, which is why we chose to buy a house in Brea specifically because of the schools. Juliette and Jack graduated more than prepared for their college careers. Carter's currently a sophomore and enjoying the same excellent education with the added bonus of a new building. All three had incredible teachers, enriching curriculum, and a plethora of musical and athletic opportunities. My parents were not college educated, but they made it clear that education was their top priority. Their influence led me to college and a passion for education is my profession. As an adult and a mother, I came to realize that education and public schools are more than my job. It's my way of serving others. That service began in my first year teaching back in 1993. Service that continued in 2004 when my oldest child started kindergarten at Hartwell. Service that continued in the district through voluntary at multiple schools and the PTAs, the Athletic Boasters, the BAM Boasters, the Education Foundation, the Committee for Good Schools, many district-level committees, and chairing multiple levy and bond issue campaigns. I served this district long before I was out of running for school board. When I made the decision to run for school board, my parents took me on from Florida. Seeing my name on the ballot was one of their proudest moments. Martin Luther King Jr. said, "Life's most persistent and urgent question is, what have you been doing for others?" I've had the privilege of serving others of the community I love as a board member since 2014. I've served with integrity and fulfilled my oath. I want to continue serving because there is still important work to be done. I came on right when the district consolidation had happened, just in time to start living the type of spirit and working towards building new schools. Now the district's needs and goals have shifted, but my passion and commitment remains. The district's vision is a diverse community dedicated to inspiring lives of character, learning, leadership, and service. I can help us further that vision and help our children succeed in school and in life. Thank you.
Jerk, homophobe, bigot, racial and religious zealot. These are just some of the ways I've been described this past year by a few members of this community. And those are just PG-rated names. All because I have different beliefs and viewpoints than they do. And I'm willing to publicly oppose and vote against certain policies that I don't feel are in the best interests of the families of this school district. In the spring of this year, soon after I spoke in opposition concerning my beliefs about gender, I received a phone call from the Cleveland Metro Parks detective. I have zero evidence that these are related events, but the detectives had suspicions. They said, "Steve, we need you to come down to the Metro Parks Division office in the Metro Parks and talk to us." I said, "Hmm, what for?" "We have a phone call here implicating you in the double murder in 2019 of an interracial couple in the Metro Parks." I said, "You what?" "Yeah, we need to talk to you." You come down here. Well, foolishly I went down there without a lawyer because they had zero evidence, so I went down. Two detectives put a phone on the table and asked me questions. For forty-five minutes, I had to prove my innocence. What kind of car do you drive? Were you ever through this area? Can you prove that you were not at work? Can you prove you were at work coaching baseball? Do you have a baseball schedule? I'm like, what kind of a system do we have in this country where a person can leave a name on a tip line and now I have to explain how innocent I am? That's a bad system. Like, well, pretty much that's the way it goes. I've also been called a part of the vocal minority by Board College. I've come to expect the cheap shots and the personal attacks toward me and my friends. Well, back in the day, I was a pretty successful pitcher, baseball coach, football coach. We won a lot of games. I loved when people underestimated me and mocked me. It fuels me. Just tell me I can't do something and then watch me and God go to work. I know that with him and great teammates, nothing's impossible. I've been told the same thing about this election. You can't change things, Steve. It's one-on-four on the board. You can't beat the system. You don't speak to the district. You ask too many questions. Don't you know that writing candidates have no shot to win? Conservatives are out of touch. We don't want your Christian beliefs in this school district. You can't do TV interviews. You can't do radio with your peers. I got a email this morning at twelve forty from a reporter who wanted to talk and I said, "No," because out of respect, I said, "No." I'm so thankful that this election isn't about me, though. It's about you and what kind of district we want. The taxpayers of this district, you're going to hear from all the candidates tonight. My desire at the end of this is that you will know exactly where everyone stands on every issue. God bless you all because this is probably the most difficult and thankless job you'll ever face, being on a school board in America in 2021.
Hello. I think I'll probably cut it a little short to give some of my time to Steve there. First, I want to thank you to the moderator, to the PTA, and to everyone who came out tonight. You know, my story's a simple one. I'm a simple guy. The, you know, I have a pretty good-sized family. My wife and I, Sarah, we live in Milburgh Heights. We have a blended family with seven kids, four girls and three boys. And we are really concerned with the district, with the success of the district. We have a huge vested interest. I have children go through public schools. I myself went to a public school. We have seen the pro kids side as well. A couple of kids have gone through Padilla, actually one just finishing up this year. My oldest daughter is a teacher in Indiana. She's a teacher of special needs. And we have two currently in district as well as another two on the way. We have a vested interest in the success of this district. I once actually was considering a career change to become a teacher. I admire teachers very much. A good teacher is worth their weight in gold. So thank you. I see some teachers out here tonight. Thank you for your attendance. I also see some students. Thank you to the students for coming out and being interested in the future of your school district. My concern here is really, and I think Steve mentioned one of the things, is that there are a number of us within the community that feel like they don't have a voice. And I'm here today as a writing candidate to be a voice to those within the community, to advocate for them for if I should be elected on the school board. Thank you.
First, thank you to the PTA Council for putting this event together. My name is Richard Mack. I was born and raised in Independence and graduated from high school in 1977. After graduating, my folks didn't want me to go to college. Instead, they wanted me to follow my father's path and go to work for Ohio Bell. I saw then, as I see now, that the path to success in the previous generation may not be the path that will lead to success in future generations. Instead, I worked my way through Tri-C in Cleveland State. It was at Cleveland State that I met my wife Shub, who, like me, was also majoring in special education. Her intelligence, kindness, and commitment to help those in need shone brightly. We've been married now for thirty-nine years. Thirty-seven years ago, we bought a little buckle in the district and it was still there. Our two children grew up there. I went from coaching my children in rec leagues and CYO volleyball to coaching the district's children in cross-country track. In 2018, I completely retired from the district to care for my granddaughter after she was born. I was hired by the district in March of 1982. Over the years, I've worked at all three communities and six different buildings as a special needs teacher and later as department chairman. During my many years in the district, many changes occurred. Four of the buildings I taught in are gone. And my second home, Mid Park, where I spent the last twenty-five years of my teaching career, is now a middle school. I went from having my teams rise up for battle against those Brea Braves to coaching our beloved Titans as the students of the district came together wonderfully. While in the different buildings around the communities, I was fortunate to work with many wonderful students, families, and staff members. The families in this district embraced and supported my students, my teams, and my projects. As a teacher, I watched the evolution and progression of services and programming for students on IEPs. When asked by a principal to create a holiday fundraiser for families in need, the Turkey Truck was born, raising over thirty-two thousand dollars. When students and staff asked me about my visits to El Salvador and how they could participate, the Brea Mid Park Solidarity Group was born. Our students and staff traveled to El Salvador seven years in a row to build six homes in a school stage as well as developing a better understanding of the struggles in the developing world. As a coach, I strive to develop the entire person, not just the athlete, and seeing my former student athletes succeeding as adults brings me great joy. I owe a great deal to the Brea schools. Not only did they hire me, but they inspired me to be more and to serve more. I believe one of the best ways to serve is by listening and engaging our students, our staff, and our residents in meaningful dialogue, hearing what folks have to say. If elected, I plan on being an accessible and visible member, listening to and serving our school district. Thank you.
My name is Doug Schwinn. I've lived in Brook Park since 1969 when my family moved here. I attended K-212 schools, Brea City Schools, starting at East Park Elementary, Dover Heights Junior High, and Mid Park High School. After high school, I attended ETI Technical College where I earned a degree in electronic engineering technology. I was a valedictorian in class. My first job after college was working for a small company that made audio equipment for TV stations. And I soon learned that I got a lot of satisfaction from working with my hands in building things. And so my father encouraged me to sign up for an apprenticeship, an electrician's local one in Cleveland, and he was a member. And so I could remember, I've served my apprenticeship, which was a five-year apprenticeship. It's a combination of going to school and also on a job training where the journeyman you work with are basically your teachers. So I had a lot of different teachers. And after my apprenticeship, I worked in a bunch of different capacities as an electrician on jobs, general foreman, foreman, steward. And I eventually ended up being offered a position working in an office with an electrical contractor as an estimator or project manager. And I've been doing that for about twelve years now. My responsibilities as a project manager, I manage multimillion-dollar projects. I create budgets, I manage budgets, I create schedules, and I also negotiate and write contracts. Civic involvement, I was PTA at Brook Elementary where my daughter attended for those school PTA. I coached in Brook Park, rose basketball, rose softball. And my wife and I, Teresa, have been married for twenty-seven years. Our daughter Andrea is 2019 graduate of Brea Mid Park High School. She currently attends the University of Akron. The reason I'm running is I started a bunch of some of the board meetings and mostly online. And I was asking my computer monitor questions. And I think that I bring a different perspective to the board because of my career path. The majority of people sitting on this stage are teachers and have a teaching background. And I think my background complements their educational backgrounds for some part of the organizational type of responsibilities in the board. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Rachel McDonald and I am so excited that you guys are here today sitting in this beautiful auditorium. I wanted to thank the PTA for hosting this event and our moderator as well for joining us this evening. I grew up a little ways from here, not really that far, but in Parma Heights. And after college, my husband and I, my fiancee and I decided we were going to move to Brook Park. So we got married, we bought a house, and we had our first baby, yeah, the very first year that we were married, and we've been here ever since. We had the pleasure of losing three boys. Our oldest is actually a graduate of 2020 of Brea Mid Park High School. He also graduated from Polaris. I'm proud to say that he now has a full-time job in the construction field, moved out, bought himself a truck, and he's doing very well. My middle son is actually a senior this year. And then my baby, who does not like to be referred to my baby, is a freshman. So we have been here for a while and we have enjoyed many, many lessons here. I am an educator. I've been in the education field for the last twenty-three years. I have taught everything from kindergarten to high school to alternative high schools in various locations around this county. I have been active in my community for a very long time. I, for a long time, was the water bottle PTA mom. That was my job for at least probably the first twelve years of my PTA. And as my children got older, I was able to take on some more roles. I currently sit on the PTSA. Here in our school, I am the secretary. I'm also the vice president for Brook Park Neighborhood Watch. I have been the sack the paperwork coach for Tri-City Sacker. I actually do tutoring for our seventh and eighth grade football, study tables, and try to keep as busy as I can. I guess the reason why I'm here and I'm hoping that I get this point across this tonight is that the reason I'm here is that I, again, I think a lot of us on this panel or the people that are running are here because we want to make sure that our community has a voice. I too sat in front of the TV watching some of the board meetings, asking questions myself, talking to my neighbors, talking to my fellow PTA members. And I'm hoping that I can be that voice for the people who have not been heard. Thank you.
I'm Heather Serpik and I also want to thank Brea PTA Council and the League of Women Voters for hosting the event tonight. I'm so glad to be here. And I am all-in for the Brea City School District. I've lived in Brea for sixteen years. I live with my husband Chris. And we have two kids who are enrolled in the district. I have a twelve-year-old at the middle school. And my ninth grader walks into this beautiful building every weekday. I am a big supporter of public education. I graduated from a public high school. And when I was in school, I carried a lot of adult stress with me. When I was in school, I worried about things like, will we make the rent? Will the landlord fix the plumbing in our place? What will my future look like? I was a free lunch kid. I sat in a cafeteria that divided free lunch kids from middle-class kids. And so I feel very fortunate today. Fast forward, I'm a proud graduate of Baldwin Wallace College. I was able to go to college because my mom pursued a job at Baldwin Wallace. And so my sister and I were both able to get a college education. From Baldwin Wallace, I went to Cleveland Marshall College of Law where I earned my law degree. And out of law school, I practiced criminal law for two years as an assistant prosecutor for the city of Cleveland, dealing with all of the problems that the city faces. And after that, I went to the Cleveland Metropolitan Bar Association where I stand today and I practice in the area of lawyer ethics and discipline. For as long as my kids have been in school, I've been an engaged volunteer in our schools. I've served for two years as the president of Grandstone PTA, two years as the middle school PTA. And I also served on Brea PTA Council. And one of the years when I served on council, we received a gift of over five hundred thousand dollars from a retired educator. That was to be earmarked for scholarships. And so I was very glad to be the drafter of the Somerville Memorial Scholarship Endowment that has already awarded thousands of dollars to graduate seniors. And I provided all of that work pro bono for PTA. And so I'd like to be able to lend my professional skills and experience to the board and continue to promote the work that I began at the middle school in the area of diversity, equity, and inclusion. I continue to be a member of the district's Jedi Task Force and would continue to be a member. Thank you.
Alright, this question will start with Mr. Donovan. What is your vision for education in this community?
I'm finishing up my first term on the Brea City School Board and it's probably been the most difficult job I've ever had. The vision that I have is that the parents control their child's education. They have not advocated control of their child's responsibility for their child's government. I see some very dangerous trends coming to public schools. The government is dictating more and more and more, and parents are getting less and less input. And that's dangerous. So that is a trend that I see. That is a vision that kind of concerns, greatly concerns me. A board member can't vote no. And I've been the only board member to vote no in the past four years. Is that what we want on the board? Five-zero, five-zero, five-zero. Are we never making a mistake? And do we never implement core policies? So if you want somebody that's going to oppose, and I don't oppose everything, ninety-five percent of the time we all vote the same. But there are moments where you have to oppose and vote against. And I only do it when the best interest of the district is in hurt or it's endangering the kids. Transportation policy recently, I voted against, the only one. Okay? I don't believe it's fair, we'll use a Jedi term, equitable, that the elementary school kids drive one mile distance and the middle school, I score one point five. My opinion, that's not fair. We have same kids in the same house that have different rules. We are not in a financial crunch. We can give everyone transportation the head of last year with some changes, obviously become more efficient. But again, the vision is that we have to hold people accountable and we have to make tough decisions. I've made those decisions, whether people agree or not, I'm willing to do them. Thank you.
In the interest of time, we ask that you don't applaud or boo or to make any other response to the various answers. Thank you.
Okay, so what is my vision for education in the community? So I'll start with, with one of my concerns, is that is the Ohio State Report Card for the district, which shows a D for achievement as well as for preparedness after high school. These, these are things that I think that everybody would share a vision, that we, we improve on these items. This is something I think is a direct concern for our community. I think that we have to, we have to have a, a focus on academic excellence. I mean, this has to be our number one priority, we're talking about those, those academics that are driving the success of our students in the future after, after high school. I also would like to stress the importance of transparency. Again, as an advocate for the community, transparency is something that is extremely important. I'd like to see that things like, like curriculum is posted and available for parents, where it doesn't have to go through a process to be able to, to get those, those items submitted for a request. So I'd kind of like to see that this is completely transparent. I would also like to see that when surveys go home to, go to kids and they're receiving an opt-out, parents are receiving an opt-out, I would like to change this. I would like to see it become an opt-in so that parents have to explicitly give permission for their children to be surveyed. These are things that I think are extremely important to help us to focus on academic excellence within the district.
Okay, my vision, it's kind of a broad-range vision, I guess. In working in the district for many years, I know in our special needs program, we've served that population very well. I think that the gifted and the higher, we've served very well. I think where we struggle is in that middle portion. And, you know, we know, I know looking at some information, 35% of our population is on free reduced lunch. I know we face challenges with very affordable housing, that we have a wide range of people. And I think my hope would be that we could really target that middle ground, that area, do thorough assessments, figure out where the, which students need what help, and then pump up massive amounts of remediation. So regardless of where a student is on that continuum, we can elevate their performance so they have options when they get to the high school level. I think if we can assess basically what our resources are, where our strengths are, where our weaknesses are, and then really dedicate 100% of our time and efforts to those weaknesses, then we can bring them up. I think we need to involve not only asking for donations from different community groups and different companies, but I think their time and their talents. We have a wide variety of really expert retired folks around that student who may want to go into electrical, whatever, become an electrician or become a machinist, to be able to spend some quality time shadowing, I think would be very wise. Not realizing that not all jobs require a college degree, but require technical training. Create a path for those people so they can see that as an option and jobs with dignity that will allow them to go on and live in our communities again, continue as it used to be in the past for people who graduate and settle here and continue on perpetuating the goodness that was Brea City School District. Thank you.
So my vision for the schools, I'm also concerned about the state report card as well. I mean, some of the state testing is not, doesn't represent things. And I don't think we should teach our kids to pass tests. I think we need to teach them to apply themselves and come up with answers to problems and problem-solving skills. And I'd like to see better procedures for track and student development from year to year and see where the district's doing things right and where they're not, and evaluate the programs to figure out where we might be better spending our tax dollars. I'd like to see the talented and gifted programs also give a boost. I've talked to many people as I've been out campaigning, and they say that their children didn't have access to be challenged. So I'd like to see some of that. Also, I think that schools today, just in general down in the art district, are missing teaching children everyday skills like everyday finance skills, balancing checkbooks, things about investment, about getting insurance, about how mortgages work, things like that. And, and I think that'll give them better preparedness for success after high school. And I think that the district needs to communicate better with, with taxpayers and stakeholders in the district. And I, I think that through their communication, they can get a better community schooling or community decisions made, get the input of the community, not only make some of their decisions as a release to education and other policy matters. Thank you.
So my vision for our community is that I sincerely hope that our students continue to feel safe within our schools, that we continue moving towards a direction of using people-first language. I hope that we continue growing in our educational quality so that we are providing different opportunities for students. A one-size-all approach is not what we need in the 21st century in education. I hope that we can continue that community sense where all stakeholders feel that they have an invested interest in our schools and our educational community. I'm hoping that all people feel like they have a voice. And either if your voice is majority with minority, we're developing skills whom we can compromise knowing that our students are the reason why we are here. This is why we do what we do. We want the best for our students so that when they grow and leave and go off on their own, they are as successful as possible and they become productive citizens. I think that we, I hope our vision includes strong communication between stakeholders and parents and schools. I sometimes forget how much chatter gives use in the educational world. And when I'm having a conversation with my husband, he's like, Rachel, I don't know what you're talking about. So taking a step back and making sure that all of the people in our community have those data tools so they can look at the data and crunch numbers and see what we're really doing well and what we need to continue to improve. Thank you.
My vision for education is one where there is a significant partnership between schools and families. And so if I'm elected to the Board of Education, an important focus for me would be to promote family engagement within the schools. We know that students perform better when parents are engaged in their students' learning, that grades improve, that test scores improve. And these are the kinds of things that would help to elevate us as a district. Family engagement, I see, is really the key to strengthening our schools. I appreciated so much that the high school put out in a newsletter a list of questions from teachers, that teachers say they wish that parents would ask during parent-teacher conferences. And I thought that it was a nice sort of coaching tip for parents on how to just get more involved in their kids' learning. Family-school partnership includes encouraging participation in those conferences, initiating and maintaining two-way communication, teaching parents really how to receive feedback and how to respond to it about your kids' learning, and just basic advocacy skills. I think that the parents in our district really care a lot, and some of them maybe don't know how to plug in. And I'd really like to, to help with that. And I see all of this, family engagement is really central. It's connected to the work that we're doing in the area of DEI. If we have students that come to school and just don't feel, feel part of the school community, it's really difficult for them to be successful. And so we have to meet the kids right where they are and help them address whatever needs they're facing so that they can be as successful as possible. My vision for the school district is that we continue to offer students a well-rounded education. We already have an incredible partnership with Polaris where students can go technical skills and earn career credentials before graduation. We have a rich history of talented students who make up our arts program, and we offer them many classes and opportunities to shine. Our College Credit Plus program offers students the opportunity to earn college credit, as does our AP program, which currently has 472 students enrolled, a number that has grown by 94% since 2019. Programs such as ADDID, Realizing Your Potential, Connections, and Titans Academy are there for students who need extra support. We offer over 75 clubs district-wide for students to learn about all sorts of things and meet people with similar interests. Our athletic program offers 29 high school sports and 11 middle school sports. But along with all these great programs, there are also some areas for growth. First, the equity audit that was presented to the board on Monday night revealed that we have a disproportionate number of students of color underrepresented in our advanced-level classes and graduating with honors. It also showed that our students of color and economically disadvantaged students are receiving more in than out-of-school suspensions. Both of these items are ones that the district needs to look at and get to the root causes of and make a plan for improvement. Another area for growth is addressing the COVID learning lag. Our students haven't had a normal school year since 2018 to 19. That's three years of education interrupted. Students in kindergarten, first, and second grade have never had a regular school year. Our seniors haven't had one since their freshman year. The district has already started implementing some plans since the summer and some other strategies to reach our most vulnerable students. But hand-in-hand with addressing those academic needs, it's also necessary to address the social, emotional needs of our students and the trauma they suffered during the pandemic. We also need to keep staff morale up during a time that seems the whole country has turned against them. The mental health of our staff needs to be a priority too.
All right, the second question, I think a lot of you have already answered the second question, but it gives you a chance to expand. And we'll start with Mr. Gabbard. Why are you running for the Board of Education? If elected, what will be your priorities?
So why am I running for Board of Education? So first and foremost, because of my family. Because we have such vested interest in the success of these schools. And for your family, for the families of everyone that feel like they do not have a voice right now. I am running for you, to be an advocate for you, for those underrepresented in the community. There was a mention of the equity audit just a moment ago that was presented on Monday. The, there's a lot of concern with things like this going on in the, in the school district right now. One of the things that, that I was able to uncover is the equity audit was completed with a framework put out by ICS Equity. If you look at ICS Equity and trade, check them back to Wisconsin, which is where they were born, you can see some of the work that they've done in Spelmanwood School District as well as in the Elm Brook School District. This framework was used, the next step that came after the equity audit was a, was a workshop. And in this workshop, they put together what they referred to as equity non-negotiables. Some of the things that were concerning in this were, consisted of, limited to, things like remove the whiteness from curriculum, focus on identity-based teaching, things like this where we are, the focus begins to shift from teaching kids to distressing their identities and such, and removing and kind of demonizing the entire culture. This is something that our communities are concerned with. And that is, that is a, that is a big item for me, to be, again, an advocate for those in the, in our community.
Okay, why I'm running, first of all, as I stated in my introduction, you know, I love the Brea City School District, having taught and been involved in it for 39 years, living in the community for 37 years. I believe in the people, the community. Our little neighborhood on Wallace Drive, little kind of John Elkins, little big houses, all these little bungalows. We're now in our third or fourth wave of families going through. So, you know, my kids grew up there, another wave, and now there are seven, eight-year-olds riding bikes. Good families, hard-working families, and I want to represent them. The old people, which now I'm one of, living on the street, and a few of the other neighbors who have been there for nearly 40 years. And I want to continue to represent them and the property values. We face many challenges, but I'm really kind of a pragmatic optimist. I believe we can write a fantastic tale of how to succeed in spite of changes that the state legislature may throw, which really kind of work against us. And in regard to other challenges that we face, there are always going to be challenges, but I believe in the people, I believe in the staff, and I believe in the community. My priorities basically is I tend to assess, I want to assess the resources we have, identify our strengths, identify our weaknesses, and see what we can do now. Develop strategic planning, looking at the community and the growth trends, et cetera, for the next five, 10, 25 years. By planning for those years, hopefully, we can avoid a lot of the pitfalls that may occur in any major crises. So basically, you know, I want to continue to serve, and that is why I'm running. Thank you.
So why am I running? I want to make our schools the best they can be. I would think everybody, everybody up there wants the same thing. And, but I think maybe some of us have different ideas on how we accomplish this. And, and I think it's accomplished by providing every opportunity possible to the students. And whether it's preparing them to enter the skilled trades, or whether it's getting ready to go to college. You need to stay focused on what really matters, and that's quality education for our kids. We do, I think we do this through the academic accountability, I touched on that a little bit earlier. I think we have to set goals, measurable goals. If you don't measure it, you can't manage it. There's no way to figure out where you're doing good, where you're not doing good. And I think if, if, if we have a procedure to evaluate the effectiveness of our administrators as well, that will also go to accountability. If they're not performing their jobs correctly, where can they improve? Where are they installing? And it'll help us team people up together in the administration, maybe, that would benefit the students. My other priority is finances in the district. And I think it was in May that the district put out a fight that we'll get at. By 2025, I believe they're going to spend down a revenue debt fund, almost $13 million, or still only $5 million left. And I think the district needs to be proactive in cost-saving measures and more funding, other sources of revenue, maybe partnering with businesses in the community. And I think we need to get, it's one of the greatest assets of our community, being three cities, is the businesses and the people.
So I feel the main reason why I decided to run for school board was that I wanted to be an active part to ensure that our parents, community, stakeholders, become active members of our student system, our educational system. One of the priorities that I think is important is that we need to make sure that communication is consistent, that all parents in our district have the tools to support their students, that they feel comfortable asking questions and working together as a team for the best interest of their child. I think a priority that is becoming more and more important is making sure that all people within the community understand how public system, school systems work, how to be data crunchers, how to really investigate. how to be data crunchers, how to really investigate family daddy, and all of those different formulas that the state and the federal mandates are bringing down on us that sometimes don't necessarily show what's actually going on. I think one of my main priorities though, however, is to serve as a nonpartial voice to make sure that we are doing what's in the best interest for our students, community, and our district. When I moved into our neighborhood, my husband and I were the young people in our street. And so we grew up, and our kids grew up kind of together, and now we are the old people on our street. And I would really like our community and our school systems to be known to young families coming in, that this is a place that you can invest in, put your roots down, grow your family, and that they will be able to be productive people.
Any decision-making body needs to have a diverse group of people at the table. We know that when you have diversity of experience, that you get better outcomes. And so I don't just mean racial diversity and cultural diversity, although those things are incredibly important. But having that professional experience when you're making decisions is critical. And so I want to bring my legal training and experience to the Board of Education. Making decisions that might have significant legal and financial consequences, I think that it's important that you have the right experience at the table as part of those deliberations. More than that though, I am, I'm just so passionate about the students in our district, having two of them that attend here. I love to hear from students. I've had the opportunity to work with students and to help them carry message about what they are experiencing in our schools. And I want to continue to elevate student voices. We have amazing, just gifted, unique, and incredibly resilient students in our district. And I just want to be able to continue to support them in any way I can.
I'm running for reelection because I've dedicated my adult life to service as an educator, a school and community volunteer, and school board member. I care about children, their well-rounded education, their physical, social, emotional, and mental health, and their futures. Education is a part that I have been mine and my family's life. Through my volunteer work, I've learned the importance of advocating for those who can't do so for themselves, our children. I feel that my experience as a teacher is a huge asset as I can see things from many perspectives, as a staff member, a parent, a community member, and a board member. I feel that I am objective and honest, trustworthy, loyal, supportive, a good listener, flexible, willing to compromise, accessible, and a team player. As a board member since 2014, I've been recognized as a master board member and a recipient of the award of achievement from the Ohio School Boards Association. I've represented the district through workshops, represented at state and national conventions. I've given selflessly of my time to serve this community. I attend events, I do my homework, I attend training, I read, I ask questions, and most importantly, I listen. To hear people say that I don't care about kids or their education because of their perception of how I feel about mask wearing, or because of a vote on a transportation policy is unfair and just plain wrong. We need to keep our eye on the ball and focus on the big picture, which is a school district of fifty-seven hundred children and seven hundred and twenty staff. We need to get back to trusting our educators, those we entrust our children to for seven hours a day. We need to get back to having conversations where both sides are listening and willing to compromise for the sake of who we represent, our children.
Why am I running for board? To be your voice. I hear talk about we need more diverse groups at the table. Totally agree. I hear that students of color are underrepresented in honors classes. Right out. You know what would help? Is how about we have a black principal and a system principal in the district? We have zero. We talk a great game. Why don't we just prove it? Why don't we put it in practice? I'm calling for more hires of black and brown individuals as principals and assistant principals so kids can see that they can get there. What incentive do they have? Why should they take honors classes if they see, I don't have a shot to get there anyway? It's all about messaging. I want to get back to basics. I want to get away from divisive agendas like CRT and comprehensive sex education and social emotional learning. They sound great, but until you start studying. Okay, if you want to know where CRT, I hear CRT is not in our district, stop afterward and prove it to you. I don't know if I'll have time to do it tonight. Okay, I have evidence that if not here, there's plenty to be here, and people want to here. America is not about, America is about individual equality, not group equity. Our state and federal constitution recognizes our individuality and gives us the same rights under the law. Equal opportunity is not the same as an equal outcome. The goal is equal protection, the right to rise, and fault, we shouldn't blame a lack of success on race, or gender, or income. It really bothers me when I hear the excuse that we can't raise our test scores because we have a lot of poverty. I don't accept that. In fact, we heard Monday night, our poverty rate has decreased eight point five percent. The economic disadvantage decreased eight point five percent, yet our scores keep dropping. I'm tired of the excuses. Who's going to help people in Commonwealth? Morality centers on individual accountability. Intergenerational debt or guilt that makes successors responsible for their ancestors is fundamentally immoral. America is not inherently racist, nor was it founded due to the desire to be a racist.
Mr. Gabbard, your time is up. All right, this time we'll start with Mr. Yack. Tell me about a time when you had to step out of your comfort zone to solve a problem.
I think in working in special education and from the kind of early part of special education throughout, it was a series of problem-solving situations. When I first started teaching, we had small group classes, the development handicap kids who were in white room, the learning disability students who were in the room next door, and the behavior kids who were next door. We had three different teachers teaching sometimes the exact same thing. And so working on utilizing our resources best, moving from that model to a cross-categorizable model, integrating the students who used to go to the county into the public schools, and figuring out ways to train both the regular education staff and then the other student body, parts of the student body to accept and understand that this is a good thing, problem-solving. Dealing with the administration, there was some, there was one meeting, I remember vividly, where it was the hair-and-pierced girl was coming back to the district, our first totally hair-gone, totally deaf girl, cochlear implants, et cetera. And the school that she was coming from, the middle school, there was the feeling that what the parents were asking for was way too much. Sitting in that meeting, knowing that my job as a special needs department head was to serve the need of both the building and the student, was a tough one because I knew I had to go against what the administration perhaps saw, but I thought it was in the best interest of the students. So being able to take a look, to listen to all sides, to really weigh things out and talk, what makes sense, what's doable, what can we do today, what can we do tomorrow, what can we work on in the future? That has been kind of the story of special education in my history. Thank you.
My transition from being a field electrician to becoming a project manager, that was definitely out of my comfort zone. I was out of my element, dealing with the business side of electrical contracting. And so, sitting in meetings and scheduling and committing to schedules, negotiating change orders, talking about money, I was always concerned that I was going to make some kind of mistake and I'd get fired. So, over, over time, something my boss at the time told me was, he said, ninety-five percent of the time, you'll make the right decision. He said, I'll live with the other five percent if you have a good reason why you made the decision you made. And I think that that type of thinking, and over time, I've learned to stay cool under pressure and, and be able to inspire, share vision with people, in meetings, and customers. And I think I can do the same thing if I'm elected to the school board.
So I have been part of the special education community since I started teaching. And I think the example that I can think of of stepping out of my comfort zone is when my husband and I discovered that our little son was autistic. And I had to trust teachers and staff to help educate my child who could stay through the works. And who will never, ever, ever forget the day that I left him at preschool and he was holding onto my legs, screaming, and saying no, because that was one of the words he could say. And I would just remember his teacher looking at me and saying, it's going to be okay. And as I'm in the parking lot driving to school to, you know, serve my students, I'm bawling my eyes out. And by the time I got to school, his preschool teacher probably had said, Mrs. McDonald, he's doing great. So being able to put myself in that vulnerable position of having to accept that there are other people who love my son as much as my husband and I do has been one of the greatest journeys that I have. And my son has taught me so many things and changed my mind on so many different things. And I think he wouldn't be where he is today without the teachers and the support that he had within the district.
In the wake of the killing of George Floyd, I think that many of us felt helpless and wanted to do something. If we didn't already know that we had issues in our country, they were totally amplified by what happened on that day. And I was going into my second year as the president of the Berryman Park Middle School PTA. And the year before, we had introduced our middle talks series where we talked about things like eating disorders and bullying and social media, just what it's like to be a middle schooler. And so I sat down with our board and said, I think we need to devote middle talks to diversity, equity, and inclusion this year. And they were supportive of that idea, but I really didn't know what that was going to look like. I'm not trained in facilitating DEI programming. And so I started to use my network, and I reached out to a professional facilitator who connected me with somebody in our community who helped us and who participated in the programs with us. And we not only hosted programs on race and multicultural students, but we also talked about things like special education and equity in our schools. And we had powerful conversations, we listened to each other, we learned from each other. And I'm not sure, I can't measure how much we moved the needle, how far we moved the needle, but I think that for the people that participated in those conversations, that hearts and minds were changed.
I've had lots of instances in my volunteer work where I've had to try and solve issues with others. When you bring a lot of people together who are passionate about the same thing, sometimes things don't work out. I've approached them all by listening, not avoiding the problem, and looking at it straight on and being honest. It's also something I do on a daily basis as a teacher. Sometimes lessons don't go as planned, or students bring their home lives into the classroom, they're hungry, they're tired. Something happened before they came to school that they can't forget. And I have to think on my feet using empathy and a lot of times comedy since I teach young children. Problem solving is something we also do on a regular basis as board members. And there's a big misconception about the role of a board member. We can't solve the problems just because you ask us to. We can't tell employees what to do, we can't eliminate your child suspension, things like that. There's a process of how things work. But in problem solving as a board member, I feel it's more like putting on fibers and pointing people in the correct direction to those that can help them. But I will always listen and help them solve the problem.
You know what's comfortable? Not being on a school board. Probably the toughest decision I had to make was this winter when I wanted to quit. I just told my wife, I said, I'm done, I'm done. I'm tired of being the only person opposing certain things. I'm tired of the slander, the name-calling. How many kids we have here today? Students, how many students? Raise your hand, okay? I know what you mean about bullying, because adults do it, okay? It's sad, but that's what you face, what you're willing to take a stand. You can disprove me or not, but I'll take a stand if I believe it's not safe for the kids and it's not in the best interest of the school district. That's uncomfortable. Everybody wants to be liked. I get it. I heard a football coach once say, if I want to be liked, I'll buy a dog. Okay, I got enough friends, I'm comfortable in my skin, I'm going to be sixty-two tomorrow. All right, so I'm comf-, I can, I can be secure in my position. You may not agree with me, and that's fine. That's what's great about America. I don't wear this stuff by accident. This is on purpose, okay? I believe in this country, but you are giving, you're giving nothing. I believe you must work for everything you get. We give a wrong message to our kids when we tell them, we're going to make things right, we're going to give you things to make it equitable, we're just going to give. No, you're going to work for it. You have to earn your way in this country. That's how this country is built. I love America, I hate what I see that's coming because everybody's got their handout, okay? Everybody wants something from every, no, that's not how the country operates, and that's not how our school should operate. That's where it leaked. I'm just doing it for the money. So, my current title, my profession is, I'm a CRI manager. I'm actually a global lead for, for a global auto manufacturing company. I work as an administrator, configurator, a sprung project manager, a business analyst. All day I'm developing requirements for a global solution to positive impacts, people all over Canada, Mexico, all of Europe. I moved from domestic implementations, I worked for just companies here in, in the US and went to work for this global company. And this, this was rather uncomfortable, and it, and it sometimes is uncomfortable most days. There are, you know, things that, things that I have to work with is diverse functional teams, global applications and things, and work with different cultures and subjects. And it's not always easy. There's different, there's different perspectives and issues and things are viewed very differently in some areas. And this is something that, you know, I have to deal with all the time. So, things that have helped me in this are really talking to people, learning, listening, understanding mostly. One of the, one of the things that I use all the time is, it's usually the root cause analysis called five lines. One of the things that I use all the time is using the root cause analysis called "Five Why's." Always keep asking why, someone tells you the reason for something, ask why. Keep going, keep going, keep going, eventually you find out what the root cause is. And I think that applies to a lot of things. We have to understand, we have to ask why, we have to question in order to get to the root cause of issues so that we can do the best that we can, not only in business, but also for students and the community.
All right, this is the last question coming up. We'll start with Mrs. McDonald. What differentiates you from the other candidates and/or board members? Sure. What differentiates you from the other candidates and/or board members?
That's a good question. So, I think one of the things that differentiates me from a lot of people is that I work in a field of education and I have children who are in the field of education. I have devoted my life to being a person who gives back to the community. I served as parent mentor for Berea City for five years, where I had the pleasure of bridging that gap between the community and parents in teaching families about special education and rights. And three years later, even though I'm at a new alternative high school with a new group of people and challenges and lovely, lovely world that I live in, I still get emails and phone calls and messages from our community asking me, going over things, making sure that they're doing everything for their children. I have devoted my entire professional world to students. I have several master degrees in education, I hold my behavioral certification. I come with an ability to be able to not put my personal beliefs in front of the greater good. And I think that is going to be one of my strongest qualities that I will use.
I've already shared that I have unique professional experience. I have legal training, having been a lawyer for nineteen years. And in that time, I have learned how to communicate very effectively with all different kinds of people, from pro se litigants to judges at the highest level of the courts in Ohio. And being an effective communicator is essential to someone that will serve on the school board. I'm known in the district, I have worked with a number of parents and with administrators and teachers over the years. And I believe that people know that they can trust me, that I follow through on my commitments, that I'm reliable. And I think that that is a great strength that I will bring to the board. I'm also a very good listener, and I have experienced convening groups of people, diverse groups of people, when we need input. And we know that as a board member, seeking community feedback is essential before you make important decisions. And so convening, listening groups might be part of the strategy and surveys. But I think that people who know me just know that I'm available and that I'm responsive. And I think that would make me a very good addition to the board.
I've already shared my experience as a volunteer in education, but I feel what differentiates me is since I've already been a board member, I know what the job entails and what the role of a board member is. A school board's charged to make policy while the superintendent is charged with administering those policies. It's not the role of the board to hyper-manage or to tell employees what to do. Actually, the only employees the board hires and evaluates are the superintendent and treasurer. School boards do things such as determine school facility needs and make plans accordingly, as we have very often the last several years. Approve negotiated contracts in our unions. Approve purchases of materials necessary for teaching and learning like computers and technology and textbooks. We review and approve the budget with the area guard and treasurer. We ensure that the community is being communicated with through a variety of methods, listening to that feedback. We attend school and community events and celebrate student and staff achievements. According to the Code of Ethics and our board policy, individual board members should support board decisions or accept the will of the majority. We render all decisions based on the available facts and individual judgment rather than succumbing to the influence of individuals or special interest groups. We don't criticize school employees in public or place the interest of one group or community above the interests of the entire district. And to me, the most important part of being a board member is to be the biggest supporter and cheerleader of the district and not work against it.
I think it's clear that what differentiates me from the rest of the board members is the willingness to stand up and oppose publicly and voice those concerns. Except there's, I'm the only person that has voted against the board this past four years. I can't speak to part of that I was not on the board. But it's a dangerous situation when everyone agrees with everything. That's not healthy. Again, I don't disagree with everything, it's ninety-five percent of the time on board. But there are times when you have to take a stand, I'm the only one willing to do it. I don't do it gleefully, I'd like to be liked, I'd like to get along and tackle problems, but that's not the job of a board member. A board member has to question and not be criticized for questioning. You can disagree and still support the decision. I don't believe it means you always have to agree. You don't undermine, you don't sneak around and try to subvert the process. You vote, vote's taken, it's four to one, move on. If people ask me to explain the decision, how am I going to explain it? Okay, and I'm going to advocate for that position afterward, but the decision's been made. So disagreement does not mean you do not support. So, that differentiates me. It's not comfortable, but again, we're not here to be liked. We have very, very difficult decisions to make. And I'm willing to go against the flow, but the things that I see coming are very concerning to me. And I would just appreciate people's support for the alternate votes. Doesn't make me right all the time, I'm not perfect, but I do have a viewpoint that needs to be reprimanded.
Okay, so what makes me different? First of all, I'm not an educator, not everybody is, but there's a number of educators. Just kind of an educator, won't be. And I'm not out simply to serve out of the goodness of my heart. I know that probably sounds cruel, and it probably makes everybody up here a better person than me, but I'm in a selfish tree since I have kids in this district. I have more kids coming through this district, I have friends and family that have a vested interest in the success of the school. And I see problems that need to be fixed. You know, we need to ensure things like that our diversity consultants are not exploiting our what's called marginalized kids for political purposes. We need sustainable COVID policies that we can't keep kids safe while not having to enforce mask mandates. We need to improve our school scorecard, better achievement, better preparedness for our students. We need ultimately to have and foster a culture of pride and achievement here in our district.
One of the things that differentiates me, while there are multiple educators, I spent my career in the district all thirty-nine years, I guess you could say. So I kind of know the district from the inside out, which brings a different level of scrutiny. I think I put a different level of scrutiny to the board. I also, early in my career, spent three years at what was then known as the Berea Children's Home, which is now the Snow School, dealing with emotional disturbed students. And part of my training, I was a district trainer for PAR, which is Physical Aggression Avoidance Response Intermediation. And it was really an important development in my career, I guess you could say, a part of the development of my career, dealing with crisis situations, conflict management, both physical and emotional. So I think that training, I have found, has benefited me throughout my entire teaching career. What a lot of people don't know is the first fourteen years of my married life, I also managed a golf course. It was the bookkeeper kind of thing. I ended up, after multiple failed leaseors, myself and the greenskeeper took over the business plan and turned a basically quarter million dollar loss into about a hundred thousand dollar profit by adjusting the business plan. So I have some decent business savvy. I have a different worldview. I've taken student groups to London and Paris, I've taken student groups to El Salvador. I've made a total of ten trips there. We've had six different AFS students, or six different foreign exchange students from Palestine, Italy, Belgium, Chile, and Italy. That worldview really, I think, helps in looking at many, many different things, locally and in the broader. And I think really, in all honesty, just that great sense of empathy for all the people who are around, being able to stand in their shoes a little bit and take a look from their perspective helps me with decision-making. Thank you.
So what differentiates me? I'm six oh three, so I think I can tell it, but then it wouldn't have been more. Seriously, my career path is a lot different than a lot of people that are appearing to people that are currently on the board. And I think that my project management experience specifically, one of the things I want to try to bring is my knowledge of finances and budgets and things, which I think I deal with probably more than the rest of the board members. So I think I have a very different perspective in that regard. Again, like I said, I complement the educators that are on the board because they have such a good foundation in the education portion of it. So more administrative aspect is where I'm hoping to make my biggest contribution. I also think that I bring a lot of objectivity to it, I can see both sides. I'm a little bit centered in some of my thoughts. And I'm always willing to listen. And I think that's something that definitely is a new quality to be on the board. And I'm empathetic, and I have a lot of enthusiasm, I'm really excited to participate. Also, I'm a member of the Civil Service Commission for the city of Brook Park, currently the chairman. And I think that's something else that differentiates me, understanding some of the parts that go with the civil service, which are also associated with some parts of the schools and the employees of the schools. And I think I get one, a lot of insight as that goes. And also with working with people that participate in labor agreements, I have over thirty-two years' experience with that.
Thank you. Now we'll do the one-minute conclusion statement, and we'll work backwards. We won't circle around, we'll work backwards, so start with Ms. McDonald, etc. Thank you.
I said at the beginning, and so I'll just say one more time, that I'm all in for the students in the Berea City School District. I've had the good fortune to work with parents and administrators and students over the years. And it was that work that really inspired me to run for the board. There is so much good that's happening inside of our schools. We have robust academics and extracurricular opportunities for students. And we have teachers that are so dedicated and so caring. They care so much about their students. Our schools aren't perfect. I want to honor the proud traditions we have in the district, but do a better job of making every student feel a part of that tradition and let them know that they can be their unique selves and still be a part of the legacy of the Berea City School District.
It's about one day, guys. I think what I want to say is that when this is all over and whoever is elected, I hope that we have the stakeholders and the community and the parents stay as active and stay as questioning as they have these last couple months because we can't have complacency and grow and move forward, and our students deserve better than that. I want people to remember that I'm an active listener and I put people first.
So one of the other things that differentiates me from the other people that are on the board, well, maybe not all, I'm not sure, but I went through thirteen years in the district. I know what it was like, I know where it's been, I know where it's going. And we set a foundation, and now we have to build upon that foundation and get to the next level and continue building on top, the next floor and the next floor of building. The way buildings go. And so what I think is, again, that I want our school district to be the best it can be. I want it to provide the best education possible, whether the kids want to go on skill trades, they just want to go work at Mark's, whatever they want to do, then we can be there to support them and make them the best person to make.
Okay, once again, I want to thank the PTA Council for arranging this event. After thirty-nine years of being closely associated with the Berea City Schools, I still have a deep desire to serve. I believe my experiences in the classroom, on its many committees, as a coach and as an active community member, provide me with some unique insights that can be of benefit at being on the Board of Education. As a teacher and a coach, I always try to bring a sense of calm and thoughtfulness to every situation. In these times of great noise, I believe the calm, understanding approach, when the values of listening, kindness, and integrity provides our district with the greatest opportunity to move forward, to deal with the challenges ahead. I'll try to be that calm, steady voice in all situations. I hope you'll consider voting for me on November 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you, once again, to the PTA moderator, to the teachers and students that have come out tonight. Again, my name's Larry Gabbard, and I'm here running as a write-in for the school board to be an advocate, advocate for the community and advocate for families so that they feel like they have a voice, not only feel like they have a voice, but to have a voice. I would be your voice. Remember, write-in, Larry Gabbard, for school board.
As a proud member of the vocal minority, here's what we don't want. We don't want masks or vaccines mandated. We don't want healthy kids excluded or quarantined. We don't want our kids bullied with zero repercussions for the bullying. We don't want diverted device of agendas in our schools. We don't want to be called domestic terrorists because we speak on the school board meeting. We don't want an unequal transportation policy that has different eligibility zones for children depending on the grade area. We don't want excuses when we ask why our standardized test scores continue to drop. And we don't want the government to replace a parent as the ones that are in charge of the child's education. Here's the one thing we do want. We want our children educated at a doctorate. On November 2nd, or sooner, if you vote absentee, you can choose what kind of school district you want. You, the hardworking taxpayers of this district, have a chance to be vocal. It's your district, it's not ours, it's yours. Be vocal with your mouth, not with your mouth, but with your pen. Relent myself, my friend here, Larry Gabbard, help us be your voice for our kids.
In our country's current climate, it's hard to be on the school board. No doubt that the last eighteen months have been challenging, but with challenge comes opportunity. A great thing that has come out of the pandemic is that people are paying attention and they're engaged in children's education. I believe that everyone on the stage is well-intentioned. I believe that everyone on this stage is well-intentioned and wants our students to achieve. But the choice belongs to the voters. It's a choice between talking about race and diversity issues and trying to, and trying to learn from and appreciate each other's differences or denying that differences are a rough line of conversation. It's a choice leading with empathy and seeking for understanding versus leading with fear and scaring people by saying that dangerous, unpatriotic devices and political policies are being secretly planned. It's a choice between listening to students and education experts for curiosity versus listening for what fits into an agenda or personal view. My choice is to have difficult conversations. Listen to people's stories, understand the data and facts, and find ways to address them and improve. I hope you will join me in these conversations and continue to make the district a great place for all students. I appreciate your vote and thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank all the candidates for their cooperation and giving us honest answers. And I, before you leave, I hope you will all pick up one of these Vote 411 PAC O R G. It's an online voter guide. You go in, you put in your address, and it brings up what's on your ballot. It's, you know, not just the candidates, but any issues that are on your ballot for where you live. And I want to reemphasize it with the folks who are working in the office because the lead women voters will incent all of you by emailing the questionnaire that we ask you to fill out. And if you fill it out, we love it. It's great. If you don't fill it out, it says candidate did not respond. And so when people go in and look at it, they want to see what candidates responded, nothing else. And if you have not heard from the lead women voters seen afterwards, connect you so that you can make sure that your information is there with all others. So, thank you very much. I appreciate all your attention and your cooperation, and it's been a great evening. Thank you.